I call the Tuesday, August 14, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And our invocation tonight will be by Pastor Robert Lee of Fairwood Agape Baptist Church. And I ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation. Then after the invocation, Councilman Moody will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that you've blessed us with, and we come now asking for your presence to be made known here. We pray for your peace, your wisdom, your strength. We pray, God, for our city council, our mayor, our staff, and all the residents of this great city. And may you be glorified in all we say or do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues on council to participate in an electronic roll call by hitting yes to indicate your presence. And, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
And our next item of business is the consideration of our minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 23, 2018, and we have the minutes of a regular meeting of July 24, 2018. Do what?
No, I'm talking to you.
Is there a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for our speakers, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you. The next item of business are public hearings. We have two, Item 18-3311. That's 18-311. And under those two applications, or two zoning applications, we'll have a public hearing for each. The way we handle this, I'll say this for the public, is that we'll ask the city manager and her staff to give some introductory remarks. Then we'll give the applicant 10 minutes to present his or her application, and then I'll open the public hearing. Madam City Manager, well, first, let's have the clerk read the caption for the first public hearing, please.
Yes, sir. 18-311, Public Hearing on Use Permit and Zoning Applications, AUP 1804 Downtown. Edward Walker requests a use permit at 467 Court Street for an entertainment establishment. The property is currently zoned downtown D1. The comprehensive plan recommends mixed-use downtown development. Planning Commission recommends approval with condition.
And this is on its first reading, is that not correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Dr. Patton, do you have any introductory comments?
Yes, we'll have Mr. Bob Baldwin to come forward with some comments.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, and members of council. As noted by the city clerk, this application was considered by the planning commission at their meeting of July the 3rd by a vote of 5-0. The planning commission recommended approval subject to 11 conditions, which are contained within your staff report materials. Just want to point out, just to make sure everyone's aware, that this use permit for this entertainment is first floor only in this building and does not extend above the first floor.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? And, sir, would you want to explain your application? Please come to the lectern. Once you get there, you'll have 10 minutes.
How you guys doing today? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay. My name is Edward Walker. We are opening up a casual dining restaurant at 467 Court Street where the old Brutus location was. The idea is going to be to have casual dining up until 9:00, and the use permit would be used after that for acoustic music. We have a piano in there as well, so maybe some piano-playing jazz bands, more of the lighter side of entertainment.
Sir, can you speak in the mic, please?
Sure. A little tall for it.
Yeah.
But more of the lighter side of the entertainment. We're not going to have concerts. It's not going to be a club. We don't have room for a dance floor. We are only on the first floor. The entire floor space is actually filled up with tables, so there's no room for any kind of dance floor. There will be a patio, which will have four tables. There will be an awning over it and a gate. Most of our food goes a little high end and low end, kind of accommodating everybody for lunch, dinner, and some nighttime stuff. The basic design for the restaurant, it really isn't an entertainment facility. We're just trying to keep up with the Joneses in the neighborhood, honestly. Everybody else down the road, they have bands and stuff, so it's kind of just being able to compete with the neighbors. And that's pretty much it. If y'all have any questions, I do have a copy of the menu as well, if y'all like to look at it.
Okay. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. For the benefit of the public, we have it in our information, but why don't you tell us the name of the restaurant and when you intend to open?
Okay. Name of the restaurant is Old Town Public House. We kind of made it based off what the building looked like. So it's really rustic, so we're going with a rustic theme. We're bringing a bourbon whiskey bar. There's actually a wall for it, but that's the gist of that part, and it's kind of a theme that's just popular right now. So we're doing that.
And you're going to plan to open when?
Yeah, well, you know, we're working on it. We could have opened already. We ended up kind of redoing the bar. It was, they had some rotten floor issues. And then the back of it had a leaking brick wall, so that had to get fixed. And now we're installed, we just installed a refrigeration, and we just found out we had to install a new hood system. So that's at least three weeks out. So I can, if I can get everything else lined up properly, the last check mark will be checking the hood system in three weeks, which will pass because it's new. So that's running about, and it might take a week just for training purposes, kind of weeding out some things.
September.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, September, so.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I will take that menu.
Okay.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Your question?
Yes, Mr. Walker, just want to know if there will be any age restrictions on the after-hours and if it will be on and off ABC?
It will be, yes, ma'am, actually. It's casual dining 100% up until 9:00 p.m. So 9:00 p.m., anybody who's not 21 will be asked to actually leave. And the reason being is, if we're doing events and stuff, I've never felt comfortable with the children being in there after 9:00 and mixing it. So it's similar to what I ran at Big Woody's. Big Woody's had bands as well, and after 9:00, we would just, we'd ask the children to leave. We gave the parents 30 minutes to kind of get everything together, and they knew about it. They worked with it, and they kind of appreciated it. But that is definitely going to happen, and we will have a security guard IDing and making sure we're following up with all the procedures for ABC.
Any other questions by council? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And now I will open the public hearing. Again, this is a public hearing on conditional use permit, U.P. 18-04. Is there anybody here who wants to speak in any way to this matter? If you do, please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Anybody wanting to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. And again, this is on first reading, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, which is to approve on first reading, vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to the next public hearing. Would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Item BZ 1802 Laurel Park. C. Rayford Ure on behalf of 3600 Forest Haven Lane, LLC, requests a proffer zoning of 3600 Forest Haven Lane. The property is currently zoned general residential. The proposed zoning is conditional general mixed-use. The comprehensive plan recommends low-to-medium-density single-family development. Planning Commission recommends approval with proffers.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, will ask Mr. Bob Baldwin to come forward, please.
Good evening again. As we discussed during the work session presentation, this is a relatively small rezoning of a piece of property that straddles the City of Chesapeake and the City of Portsmouth jurisdictional boundary line. A split would create one parcel which would be zoned GMU. Stacy, if you could go to the map, please. It would create a parcel that would be split between GMU and General Residential. As is noted in your staff report, the applicant did submit a proffer letter which agrees to subdivide the property in order to make sure we don't have a split parcel. I would like to advise you, I've spoken to the applicant following the work session tonight, and they have met with the neighbors who have indicated some concerns to council, and I believe Mr. Ure will address their concerns, and there will be a supplemental proffer that he has discussed with them, and I have seen it, and we are okay with the revised proffer letter.
And that will be presented tonight?
Yes, Mr. Ure has the proffer letter.
Any questions of Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? Sir, would you come to the lectern, identify yourself, and you have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Rayford Ure, officer of that 901 Port Sona Parkway, Portsmouth. As fate would have it, I rode up on the elevator this afternoon with this wonderful couple, and instinctively, I knew that it was my opposition. So rather than getting up here and putting on boxing gloves and fighting it out, I think we pretty well got everything resolved, and now he must have missed Doyle to verify all of this, but there was somewhat of a misunderstanding. As you can see, this is kind of a situation that goes back to the same old Chesapeake line that was drawn in the '60s that has caused all of us in Portsmouth a lot of concerns and headaches and heartaches and everything else through the years. But this case, we will have to record, if we're successful in this, the rezoning in Chesapeake as well as in Portsmouth. As you can see, what I will call the handle that is part of the First Team Toyota dealership is a wooded area that went with the lot. How it got there, I don't know. The subdivision was actually recorded in 1952, and then, of course, the annexation took place in the '50s. This did not start out being a dealership. It was, the building was actually built for Lowe's, and they actually ran that as a Lowe's for many, many years. I believe Mr. Lewis picked it up and converted it probably in '07, 2007, or something similar to that. And in addition to that proffer, I would like to present the one that I drew up this afternoon very late, as a matter of fact, when I found out what was happening, and I would like to present this.
If you, down here, sir. Do you have a copy that you could read? Do you have a copy that you can read?
Let's see, I think probably not, but I think I can remember it. It's fairly simple. The existing lots that is contiguous to...
Sir, could you speak in the mic?
Certainly. The lots that are contiguous to the one that we are talking about, only a part of the one that we're talking about to be rezoned, that juts into the existing parking lot, car storage for Tower Toyota, we are asking that that be conditionally rezoned to eventually become part of the Toyota parking area. The residence and the garage that face on Forest Haven Lane will remain a residential lot, and Mr. Lewis's right plan right now is to sell it to whoever is on the open market. There'll be no more rental property there. I think the main concern was the fact that when cutting it off, that we will preserve, and this is basically what the proffer is saying, we'll preserve all the trees that are existing, on the existing lot. The garage in the back stays where it is. The only thing we can't do is, and I'm not sure, because I did go in my files this afternoon and pulled a recorded plat of Laurel Park that was recorded in 1952, there is no easement, there is a long enough drainage or a green area or whatever else. So as I told Mr. Miss Doyle, we will leave the trees, we will honor the rear yard setback that you have in all residential lots, therefore the trees will have to stay. And they talked about a berm. I don't know anything about a berm, but the good side of that is, the trees, they have to stay, because if you took the trees down to build a berm, then you got to plant trees back again, and I think the landscape ordinance would prohibit all of that. So I think we have satisfied Mr. Miss Doyle, and of course, they are here to speak to that. And there'll be no commercial activity on Forest Haven Lane, just like there's no commercial activity there now, that will be created by Tower Toyota or this rezoning. Anyone have any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Before we ask any questions, I might ask the city clerk to read the proffer. Would you read it in its entirety, please?
Yes, sir. August 14, 2018, this correspondence is from First Team Automotive Group. Robert A. Baldwin, Director, Planning Department, 801 Crawford Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. Dear Mr. Baldwin, I, W. Ashton Lewis, am the owner, manager of 3600 Forest Lane, Forest Haven Lane, LLC, and I hereby voluntarily proffer to extend, extend the 20-foot rear yard buffer that exists on all residential lots that are contiguous to First Team Toyota. Furthermore, I also proffer that all trees east of the extended fencing that exist today will remain unless they are damaged by storm, disease, or insects, and become a hazard to the surrounding property. Sincerely, W. Ashton Lewis.
Thank you, ma'am. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Ure? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Ure, no question, but I do want to thank you for resolving the issue with the Doyle family. They had sent an email to council, and I met with them and actually walked down Forest Haven and onto the property to get a clear understanding of what their concern was, and being residents of that community for, I believe, over 50 years, they had some legitimate concerns about the greenery, the buffer zone areas, and so I appreciate the fact that you all have resolved that to their satisfaction.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Thank you, sir. You may sit. I will now open the public hearing for Z 18-02. Is there anybody in the audience that would want to speak either for or against or in any fashion? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Please come to the lectern.
My name is John Doyle. I live at 3621 Forest Haven Lane, and we've been residents there for well over 40 years in Forest Haven Lane, which was identified as Laurel Park. I want to say thank you to the Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council Persons for listening to my questions and concerns, and Mr. Ure for taking the concerns into his changes of plans. I want to thank Mayor Rowe for coming out to the area, and Dr. Whitaker for the tour that we gave him of the area. As far as the property, it's identified as, we were concerned that it was going to be zoned completely, the way it was written up, it sounded like it was going to be completely commercial in that area. We find out that it's been crossed out, and there's split up into general residence and commercial residence, which is satisfactory. As far as the berm, I'll just let Mr. Ure know that there is a berm behind the other houses that are there. Putting the tree, leaving the trees and putting a fence up, that's great, that would be appreciated. And as far as what I called the green zone, yes, it is part of Chesapeake, or it was part, it still is part of Chesapeake, and I don't know if they call it a green zone anymore, but Chesapeake's responsibility is there. And as far as the trees, Mr. Ure indicates that they'll probably stay up as well. So I want to say thank you to all of you, and I appreciate it, Mr. Ure, for taking care of the actions and concerns.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doyle, I just wanted to mention that I don't believe you were present during our work session tonight at our 5:00 meeting. We had an excellent presentation from Mr. Baldwin and our planning staff about this, because many of us had questions, and some of your neighbors had called us, and I talked to one of your neighbors who's nearly 100 and I think is one of the original residents there.
Yes, sir.
And it was made very clear with the delineation of the residential zoning on the front that there can't be a cut-through, there's no driveway, there's no easement, and I think all of that alleviated a lot of concerns a lot of us had. So I'm very comfortable with the way this is done now, and particularly now that there's been agreement on the setback and the trees and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
No, sir. Anybody else wants to speak either for or against or in either way on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none. I now close the public hearing. And this matter is on first reading. Is there a motion? A motion to approve?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and it's to approve on first reading. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that passes on first reading. Which brings us to City Manager's Report, Item 18-312, which is a consideration of a certain ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a conference and education assistance program grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Women in Public Service Conference.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to our next item, which is Item 18-313, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,709.70 from the Virginia Department of Health and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services for the USDA Summer Food Service Program.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Item 18-314, the consideration of another ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an aid to local ports program grant in the amount of $37,500 from the Port of Virginia and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for disbursement by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services in connection with the construction of playground equipment and security enhancements at Paradise Creek Nature Park.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 18-315, consideration, adoption of ordinance accepting certain funds. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting one-time Part C program funding in the amount of $100,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to provide developmental services to infants and toddlers.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ready for the question? All in favor of the question, the motion to adopt, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries, too. Which brings us to Item 18-316, the consideration of a ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting sta, excuse me, step VA funding in the amount of $247,500 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to develop a more comprehensive and accessible system of services for those with behavioral health disorders.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion, which is to approve? Hearing none. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, Item 18-317, reports on board. board, send commissions.
Mayor members of council, there are no boards and commission appointments to discuss this evening.
Thank you. Item eighteen dash three eighteen, items submitted by council members, and we need to add an item to the agenda, which is the consideration of a September meeting. Is there a motion to add that item to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to add this item to the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Now, we need to consider setting a meeting, a work session with the Planning Commission for six P. M. September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, in the council conference room. Is there such a motion?
Same age.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Any other items submitted by council members? Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. We have a lot of things going on between now and our next meeting later in August. This week, by this Friday, if you are so inclined, we'd love for you to make donations of school supplies, which will go to the Portsmouth Schools Foundation to distribute to our children. Donations of backpacks and pencils and pens and paper and everything you can think of are being taken on the third floor of City Hall in the school offices or on the sixth floor here in the city manager's office. This coming Thursday is a Sunset Thursday, and we'll hear the band Slap Nation at the foot of High Street from six-thirty to nine. That's a free concert. Bring your lawn chair and enjoy being outside. Also, next week, on Thursday, the twenty-third, again, we have Sunset Thursday, the Michael Clarke Band will be playing, six-thirty to nine, at the foot of High Street at High Street Landing. Or for something different, on Thursday, August twenty-third, the Friends of the Juvenile Court will be having their annual Children's Chair Affair, where they have artistically painted chairs that they will have on a salon auction to sell to raise funds for their cause. You can call Susan Fink for tickets at three-nine-seven-two-seven-nine-nine, and that will be at the Badawi Pavilion from six to eight P. M. on August twenty-third. That following weekend, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, is the Forty-Eighth Annual Seawall Art Show on that Saturday and Sunday. That will be in the first two blocks of High Street on Saturday and Sunday afternoon. That's always a crowd pleaser. And looking into the horizon into September, just to make you aware, we will have another Medicaid expansion information session at the main library on Friday, August thirty-first. That will be from one-thirty to three P. M. If you need more information, you can phone four oh five eighteen hundred. We will be starting the six to six after-school, before and after-school daycare program through the Parks and Recreation Department. You can call three-nine-three-eight-four-eight-one for information on that. That is a fee-based program at ten of our elementary schools, very popular. And later into September, mark your calendars, for the Fraternal Order of Police is having a motorcycle ride and barbecue event at the Harley Davidson Store, Bayside Harley. That will be on Sunday, September thirtieth. And for more information and tickets for that, you can go online to portsmouthfop.com. And that's all, sir.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to call on staff to update us on the road cave-in that occurred over the weekend on Riverside, between Riverside and Craney Brook.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. On Sunday morning in the Churchland area, along Riverside and Craney Brook Road, we experienced a road cave-in. The following work has been performed to get the road repaired and open to public. Starting on Sunday, our teams were out. They excavated the site starting Monday and through this morning. They found the problem to be an old rusted corrugated metal pipe. Pumps are set up in place in case there is rain or storm between now and when the work is completed. The replacement concrete pipes are being delivered either late today or in the morning. The construction of concrete structures and pipes will begin tomorrow, and the completion of all construction, including paving of the street, could take approximately three weeks with weather permitting.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Dr. Patton. Thank you. Our next item is report on pending items. Dr. Patton, anything to report? Okay. Which brings us to non-agended speakers, and our first speaker is Barry Randall. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Barry Randall from the Prentice Park Section and the Hodges Manor Section portion of the city. I'm here tonight to kind of talk about the crime and the education piece. I was not going to be speaking this summer, wanted to take the break, take a break to kind of prepare for some other things that I'm doing in the city, but I see that we still have this council that is constantly still fighting with our school board in reference to the education piece with the funding. It's funny, because the budget season is over. You all have made it clear that, for the most part, you're not pro-public education, and I'm just kind of lost, because if we have our public safety being funded at, I believe, around fifty-nine million three hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, as opposed to you all funding our schools at fifty-two million seven hundred ninety-six thousand forty-five dollars. I'm kind of lost, because with the crime that's happening in our city, I'm trying to figure out why aren't you guys picking a fight with the dope dealers? Like, you know, as opposed to beefing and being angry with our school board members, why aren't you guys upset that just this morning, we had another murder in the city? Just last week, we had a male and a female shot in the city. Just two Saturdays ago, we had another person killed in the city. We have persons on Facebook letting everybody know that after the club hours, you can just meet them at their house. They even put their address up there to come and buy the alcohol and liquor that they want. And in order for a person to do that, they either have to have a working relationship with the police department, or they just don't care. My point that I'm making is, I wouldn't dare hold our police officers accountable because of the crime that's happening in the city. Like you guys like to say, well, you all will fund public education based upon the students doing their performance, and if they're doing better. I have an issue with that, because our police officers are doing their job. They can't stop people from shooting and killing one another, no more than a teacher can make sure that a child has the ability or inability to read. They can do what they're supposed to do as far as teaching, but it still takes some help at home. But my issue is, we still have you guys, and I believe it's Councilwoman Lisa Lukasberg, who speaks for you guys as a whole, because you all are not saying anything. You've done your part, and you voted, and you kept it moving. But our Councilwoman here, she constantly likes to let it be known that the school board is lying. You know that you all didn't fund our school division at a hundred and ninety-two million. Where was, when did you all vote to give them a hundred and ninety-two million? When did you all vote to give them additional funds outside of the fifty-two million dollars? You did not do that. So my point that I'm making is, if we are benefiting from public education, when we look at our great, her mom, Senator Lukas, who built a successful business off of public education, we should make sure that we are constantly doing what we're supposed to do for our children, so that we do not have to continue to fight crime, because poverty and education is right there. If you have poverty, homelessness, crime, it's all factor in from education. And if we do not fund education, you are going to fund Sheriff Michael Moore to make sure that he can house them in the jails. And I have a problem with that. We need to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do as a city, to make sure that we are doing right by our children. And again, if you all are up in arms about a school board, they're liars, they are whatever you guys call them to be, why aren't you all upset with the dope boys? Why aren't you all upset with the people that are selling alcohol after two A. M. in the morning from their homes? Like, where's that, where are those tweets and what have you? But when we look at what's happening in our nation, when I look at Councilmember Bill Moody, campaign kickoff, I'm not attacking, you don't have to push the gavel, you know, I see a bunch of Republicans there. When I see former city managers tell Mayor John Rowe, "Great job, we're going to make Portsmouth great again," that's disturbing, because that term comes from President Donald Trump, who months ago looked at our black men and called them sons of dogs, female dogs, because they take a knee. And then just today, this same president told a black woman that she was nothing more than a dog. Good job for firing that dog. Councilwoman Lisa Lukasberg, I don't have an issue with you, but if you continue to promote the agenda, just know at the end of the day, you're nothing more than a dog.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Our next speaker is Clyde Toler, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city managers, city attorney, Ms. White, Stacey Diamond, good evening. Clyde Toler, ten hundred block, Blair Street, Parkview. Well, I really hit a knife for you, really this, this, I was really kind of angry with you, council, when you voted for that neighborhood for to put that, say, millennium over there. Now, you must remember, you ain't going to get no vote from over there, but just think about all the peoples that live over there. It's going to be voting, and you know you're not going to get a vote from them, because you voted to put that place over there in that neighborhood after they cried to you not to do it. See, sometimes you got to think about how you're voting and what you're doing to peoples, we, the peoples of the city. Because there's going to be a lot of peoples who have kin peoples who live out of that neighborhood, they're not going to vote for you. And the next thing I got is, I want to talk about the Planning Commission. They do a good job, and they come before you, they present it to you and everything, and you got these peoples on the Planning Commission who know what they doing. They go out and see the thing, and I know some of you council members did not go over that neighborhood, did not check it out and anything, but if I was on that Planning Commission and you treat me like that, I quit. These are experienced people, and when they bring something to you, you know they have really did their work to see what's good for the city. So let's consider things a little bit better than what we do, because you make them look bad when you do that. When they done spend all this time looking and doing, and they pass and they come to you, and two or three, you sit up there and say, "No, we don't want it." But don't do that. And there's a lot of people running for city council and school board. I don't see any of these peoples on the mayor's board. I don't see, even see them at city council, but yet they can come to me and ask me to vote for them, put yards signs in my yard. No, you can't put a sign. I don't know you. Now, you might come here when I'm not here, or you might come here when I'm gone, I don't know, but I don't know anything about you. But yet you want to come out there and tell me you want to be on city council, that you want to be on the school board? I don't think so, not me. And I will tell people that I know, don't vote for them, because they don't do it, what have they did for the city? Where are they tonight? I don't ever see them here, but yet they can come and say they want to run for someone in this city and be some, no, you can't be nothing for me. And don't let no organization, no peoples, a lot of peoples come to me, "Who should I vote for?" Well, the church said vote for it. Look, be your own person. Don't let nobody tell you who to vote for. I don't care who you are, if you're a lady, a man, black, white, purple, pink, but I'd like to see some Asians and some Indians up on this council. Where are they in this city? Come on, let's run for it. Let's come out here, and let's get on things in this city, and let's do something. But I look at, I may go to a mini function. I know who I see at these functions. Oh, yeah, I know who I see, and I know who be there. But when you come to me and tell me, the rally people, to vote for you, and I never see you at city council, I never see you at none of these entertainment things that goes on in this city, you don't come down here and say, fix a pothole in the city, anything, but yet you want to be on the school board and you want to be on the council. I don't think so, no way. And peoples of Portsmouth, you need to wake up, because you are the one responsible for it, because if you vote for them and put them up here, you're going to still be sitting at home crying about, this is going bad in this city, this is going bad. Look, if you don't come out and do something about it, it's going to be bad. But, Mr. Moody, I'll be fair with you, yeah, you go where. You, you, you will win. You can take that from me. You will, you will be on council again. But citizens of Portsmouth will tell you, beware of who you vote for. November is around the corner. Watch the wolves come out. If you're a lamb, be careful, because they go eat you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty number ten reads, "The God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. This means that we, the people, have had our parents or caregivers teach us discipline. Along with discipline, we were taught natural law, so we can be morally strong and avoid vices, because we have a duty to our Virginia Constitution to self-govern. How can we self-govern if we haven't been taught self-control and manners when we were children? So the Constitution ensures that all power is vested in and derived from us, the people, and that the elected are our trustees and servants, and at all times amendable to us. So government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of us, the people. Our government is best when it produces the greatest degree of happiness and safety and secures us against the dangers of maladministration or bad management of public affairs. How does our Virginia Constitution give us the right to self-govern in our city? We have a city charter. It states that the city council shall consist of a mayor and six council members to be elected by and from the city at large, and they take the oath of office. This oath is how they embrace the rules of our Constitution. The elected are our trustees and are liable to be called to account if they aren't representing us. Are the elected representing the people? Are they being held to account? To make sure they are, we, the people, can divide the city into five districts. In this way, the elected will maintain safety and security for us. Each of the five elected can draw lots for the five service districts, such as District One for downtown, District Two, the south side, District Three for Truxton, District Four for West Haven, and District Five for Churchland. Elections by districts would create representation and accountability of the elected. This is one structural issue of the city, which allows the elected to follow our Virginia Constitution and allows the people to self-govern. The second structural issue that will allow the people to self-govern is for the elected to stop yielding or allowing their duties and responsibilities to be taken over by the executive administrative head of our city government. The limitations are outlined in the charter. The limitations of duties are listed. They are oversees that all laws and ordinances are enforced, manages all employees and all departments, offices, and agencies of the city, delegates authority among the appointees, recommends to the city council when such laws, ordinances, and duties are not being followed, and what measures may be necessary or expedient to enforce them, and keeps the city council fully advised as to the financial condition and needs of the city at all times. These are the basic limitations outlined in the charter. There is a letter to the city council to give an executive summary of the budget by the administrative head. This letter demonstrates that the elected have yielded or allowed their duties and responsibilities to be taken over by the executive administrator. See the copy of the PowerPoint that was created from this letter. It addresses the yielding of the council's duty. The next item regards petitions for initiative. This role is for people to create, not the administrative head. Next, all information concerning the school board demonstrates the yielding- Next, all information concerning the school board demonstrates the yielding of the administrative head as well. The school board is its own identity, entity. It is governed by the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Virginia Board of Education, and the Virginia Board of Schools Association. All the city council has to do is to approve the budget for the school division and make sure there's evidence to support all the requests for funding, including capital improvement projects. Once the school board's budget is approved and the evidence is presented to support the funding, this is all that is required from city council. There's no need for any meeting by the administrative head with a school board member or superintendent. We, the people, are the government, and we, the people, need to have an assigned representative in our own district so we can hold him or her accountable if he or she is not voting in the best interest of our area of the city. Lastly, the school board and superintendent need to have the budget available for people to review and understand on a monthly basis. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Kumani Grant. And you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Kumani Grant. How are you all doing? So I am here to, I guess, present what I do. I'm a musician, as well as a cultivator of sorts. I, I'm working on growing, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of the term permaculture, but it's basically self-sufficient farming in just residential areas. And I am currently working on doing that now in my community in Cavalier Manor. I was, sorry. I just wanted to, I guess, present myself and, I guess, let you know what it is that I'm planning on doing in the future and what I would like to do if the opportunity presents itself. I would like to, I don't, I haven't met with the school board for Lakeview yet, but I was going to see if they have like a farm-to-school program to work out some sort of educational food program to just teach kids that you don't necessarily need to, well, not even kids, just America, that we can kind of provide for ourselves in a sense and kind of convert, not even convert, that's a strong word, curve our consumptive habits and start producing for ourselves a little bit more and shifting the balance. It seems kind of off to me. But yeah, I studied, I've been studying, I graduated from Norcom. I studied at University of Maryland and Virginia Tech for architecture and urban redevelopment. And like I said, I'm a musician as well. So I guess I'm here for a little bit of, I guess, political, public presence, just making myself known, letting you know who I am. I also, am I speaking too fast? Is this a, okay. Yeah, so I listened to, I don't know if you guys are like, any music listeners in here, but I was studying a project Obama did for his community in Chicago. It's basically more so a museum of sorts, or just like a, I lost the word. A commune is the wrong word, but just like a place where the community to come together and learn, fellowship, all that good jazz. I just wanted to kind of, I know there's other workings in the community here, but just sort of work on getting something like that working going here as well. And like I said, just kind of shifting the way we do things as a nation to more of a productive. So, yeah. My name's Kumani Grant. Thank you for listening, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Mr. Grant? You piqued my curiosity. What, what do you grow in your garden?
So, right now, it's August. I'm going to start growing the vegetables. It's my first batch. I just started this. So I'm working on getting all the business sides of like marketing and all that good stuff going. But right now, I have a grow list of, I'm coming. I should have that open. Okay. So my vegetables right now that I'm working on is just spinach, cals, collards, garlic, onions, and peppers. But like I said, I really wanted to, I don't know if I said this. I wanted to, I have a grow list if you want to see what I do plan on growing next season, as well as in the future. So, and also the thing with this, I wanted to work on, it's a nonprofit, but I wanted to show that it can be, startup can be almost net zero, or if so, just like a few couple hundred bucks, which I don't know if, I'm pretty sure nobody's researched. I'm not gonna say that, and that's negative. There's YouTube videos of like people doing it for under six hundred bucks. But it's just the aspect of like, people have the notion that it costs a lot to farm and all this stuff, and I just really wanted to do that for the community and show them that. The way that I'm going about it, it's so far, I've only spent no more than a hundred bucks, and that's mainly on transportation, because I'm using pallets as raised beds, and I'm just reconstructing them for.
Mr. Grant, we have another question. Councilman Smith.
Yeah, I went way too far.
Do you have a follow-up? Yeah, and the reason why I ask the question, you know, we have a farmer's market in Old Town here.
Right.
And if you, if your crops get as such, that's beyond your own consumption or your neighbor's, you might consider taking some of the products to the farmer's market. Just a, just a suggestion.
Right.
A member of staff can certainly help you to make that contact.
Dr. Patton, would you, yeah?
Yes, Mayor, I've asked Mr. Pace to get Mr. Grant's information because we'd like to follow up with him and connect him with the Health Department.
Councilman Smith.
How you doing, Mr. Grant?
Finding yourself?
I'd like to get up with you two, especially since you in my neighborhood in Cavalier Manor. And so we can talk about some of the things, because we're, we're working on some things out there, too, in Cavalier Manor, involving Echo District. And some of your ideas and some of the things that you bringing up could be valuable to some of the things that we're doing out there. So I need to get your contact information, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We have no further speakers, and we have no further business. This meeting is adjourned.